Nine forty-six.
Nine forty-six. All right, this is Christina. That's Christina. All right, and then Renee. And then Renee got to call that number. Can we do that? Well, she's here if you want to hear what she has to say. Okay, yeah. Well, we can't take any action on it anyway, since it's not on there. Um, we'll come back to that just in comments in a few moments. Um. We're still on number nine, and the discussion is, um, the personnel matter. And this is for the, um, the, um, hiring of, uh, an emergency management coordinator. And that is going to be a part-time position. If we have that motion. Um, and that they will be paid, uh, as part-time, but they, it's an exempt position, so they will not have to turn in a payroll, I mean, yeah, payroll sheet. Can we do that, Jenny?
Uh, I've never heard that on, on the part-time, um, of actually getting a salary, but I could definitely check on that.
Well, maybe we won't say it's even part-time. We're just gonna hire them at a monthly amount. And if, I, we won't know if it's part-time or full-time.
Okay.
There we go, all right. Um, has, we've been having some discussion about that, um, about how we would handle that, but it will be an exempt position. And will that work, Jenny?
Um, I think so, but I'll definitely check on that.
Okay, sure, all right. And part of, um, well, it'll be the emergency management position, and also we'll be, um, seeking grants, writing grants to try to get funds, um, for our county. Is, is the discussion. Any discussion on that?
Make your move.
We only have one applicant.
We did advertise, and we only have one candidate.
Yes.
You should, Judge, um, Jeremy just reminded me that you have to make a certain salary to be able to even qualify for the exempt, and I think it's like thirty-four something, so...
Thank you, I forgot that?
I think it's actually the number four.
That's correct.
Okay.
I think it's thirty, it used to be twenty something, but I think it's thirty-four something.
We had that with, uh, Renee.
Yes.
All right, so we may have to do a, um, timesheet then.
And just on that, it comes salary first, and you have to meet that criteria, and then after you meet the salary criteria, then it has two other reasons that you have to, um, are a few other things that you have to meet.
Could we do it on a contract basis?
I don't know that, I don't know that either.
Yes, that's right.
It's because you have to be...
Yeah.
Purchase service, purchase service.
Well, kind of that. No, it really would be more on a contract basis, though.
We don't see why not, but I'm shooting from the hip, so I definitely ain't...
That, that's, I think, what we'll look at, is doing it on a contract basis. There's a contract with them to do that. All right?
So we still have any questions?
Yes, if it turns out, after we do a little research, that we can't do that, we'll have, we'll come back next time and see what, how we can do it.
I like the motion that we, um, hire Leonard Smith for the position.
On a contract basis.
On a contract basis.
That's second.
On their eye, motion carried. All right, and, um, Ryan, I see you're writing, so we'll look at that.
Yes, ma'am.
We're good with that. All right, thank you. All right, um, we'll go to item number ten, which is salary grade caps. Well, we've got a long time to think about this, because we actually won't be looking at anything, looking at the caps again until, um, next budget time, whenever we change salaries again. But we need to do some research and make a decision, all knows, as to whether we're actually gonna have them or not have them. Because when it comes time, next time, for us to, to set our salaries, um, if we keep our caps, there'll be a lot of people that won't be able to raise, so we probably are gonna need to adjust those caps up then.
Judge, I made those changes on the Sheriff's Department from last time, and I think I brought you a sheet.
Just a new one.
Thank you, thank you.
So for right now, there'll be no action?
No action now, okay. Let's go to item number eleven, sealed bids for Freestone County Used Furniture and Equipment. And all of that good stuff has been put down in the sheriff's part of the records building. Everybody that's discarded anything, whether it works, doesn't work, is falling apart, is in that si, that area. And so, uh, the sheriff is going to have his, anything that's good that he wants to keep, moved into one section, and then the rest of it, we're gonna advertise for sale, so we can get it out of there. So if any of you want any, they got some used chairs that are not in very good shape, but if you would need them or anything else, go look, and if you wanna get it for your place, okay, but if not, we will be selling that.
The only, the only chairs we have down there right now that are good are, are still in seizure process.
Still in seizing? Oh, well, you need to...
Uh, they're already separated.
Separate those two, okay.
There ain't none down there that won't get jumped. Just keeps getting piled up down there.
So we're putting that out for bids, and that will be out in the newspaper this time, and then we will be, um, looking at those and, uh, looking at all the bids that we get and see if we will be awarded all of that stuff. Okay. That was just information only. Number twelve, redistricting, all right. Okay, do we have copies of stuff?
All I've got, Cody gave us a short list.
I didn't grab any of your stuff, 'cause I thought you had it in a pile in there. You didn't grab this one?
Yeah, or did I? Am I not? All right, bring her in. Thank you. While she's bringing that in, let's go back up to reports on number five. Would you like to give us a report, Renee, of your issue with the, um... Yes. ...willing school? I had, uh, I had one of our, uh, fellows call us this morning. Well, he called yesterday and said, "I don't know if you were aware or not, we may not be able to use Dobie Cafeteria." So he had a meeting today with, uh, someone, went down there this morning. Uh, "We are not gonna be able to use it. Pipes are burst, ceilings falling in, and it's been vandalized pretty," he said, "it's pretty bad." So I've gotta find another place to do the voting for our fifth one, too. Um, what are they using the rest of that school for, New York? He said, "There's damage in a lot of it. A lot of the tiles and stuff have fallen in and stuff that I, he didn't say." What about the gym, Warren? I can ask, I can go down there and look today. Okay, would you? Yes, ma'am. I think we could just clean it up and have you use the gym for this time. Okay. And then we'll have to have a little break the next time. We probably need to decide something today. Right, right, yeah. So we can get it in a, well, we have... We have a few days, but... Few days, all right. Yeah, I think it's gonna be running in the newspaper next week. Yes, okay. So I have till the end of this week, I think. Well, we need to have a, another special meeting in order to approve that? Yes. Or, um, um, can we make a change without the Commissioner's Court approving it? Well, we'll have to do the, the previous precinct, so we can put it on the Dobie Cafeteria, but I don't know if that's necessary, si, if we can get it in the same... If, oh, if it's in the same building, I think we're fine. Same building is fine, but if I have to move it to a, a different area, we will have to do something. We have to advertise it, but I don't know if that, know that necessarily. All right, we'll have a special meeting for that. All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought you were, had a pile of work this morning. Is that it?
Um, all right, the pictures, one of the main things, you all have pictures, everybody?
This one wants a job.
All right, Beth, would you, um, take this back and make copies of that?
I think they have this one, they just don't have these.
It's currently the way it is.
Beth, let's take this one, too. Thank you.
What I never saw after he did send something back was where, where any changes were recommended based on the first, uh, where he said that some of us had to change. Well, that you had too many voters in your precinct.
Any gets more.
Oh, you have more.
I had more.
You have more. I'll tell you what I'd like to do, and I'm gonna have to do a table. I tell you, four, precinct four runs across eighty-four inch city of T. You know where that is?
Uh-huh.
I'd like to put that in precinct two with that, and I want to go above, still in it all the way up down, and then still above.
Jeff, all right, I think some of the...
No, I've got more.
...discussion has been if we could try to, uh, with him, if we could try to maybe change it on eighty-four being the line, and, um...
That's what this one's showing out here.
Eighty-four being the line, so that would mean that anything on the other side of eighty-four, that T, the south side, would, would, well, I don't know, does city limits go across eighty-four? Okay, so then that would have to be a change there.
Well, no, I mean, it was just that, that, I forget what street number it is.
Oh, I know, I know, it's...
But it's just basically any of them on the, on the north side of eighty-four, they're both in precinct four anyway.
So if we moved it just to eighty-four, then that would... Plus, that would take some voters out of yours, and that would end with your numbers. Because you have too many, I think. And so that would...
You've got forty-seven, sixty-eight.
I was about three hundred short of, yeah, and that was pretty much the population, right?
That one, sure. Hold that.
And, and was it, uh, I forty-five or seventy-five for them?
Well, it was I forty-five, and T would get down to twenty-seven, then that's where the problem is, in the center.
Right.
But he can, he can go a little thing and go over and pick up just her area.
That's what I'm wondering, if we could just cut the lines on both sides of twenty-seven.
To where it's just...
And then turn on that, is it twelve forty-one?
I think we can, I mean, we basically did it for this other. And then we check, um, yeah, they just come right down here, go and take in what's hers, and go right back down.
Or twelve fifty and twelve forty-one.
Place it down.
I think her address is on twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty.
I think you have to turn it on.
So if you did...
Whatever this road, twelve fifty, turn. Twelve fifty runs east and west.
Right. And she's on...
She's right here on the tail end of twelve fifty.
On twelve fifty. So if it just went up, then she's in...
So whatever this road is right here.
Right here, twelve forty.
We got to be careful now, can't use that road. We gotta hang a right to answer that.
So then you know how to take in this road and that road.
We need it to go up, I'd say from this side of twelve ninety, and then about here. Since she's right in there. If anybody builds right there, they'd be the floor. And then from this side of this, and then going down to there, what was saying? Twelve fifty.
Well, what about you, Bill Green Country, in here, in the micro, uh, up on the view of? Michael Morrison.
I had some people on, I had some people on Michael Morrison.
I know you did.
Okay, yeah, all right. We got the twelve fifty, we know that'll be an issue if we change, but looking at it now, the whole...
Which one I just seen it doing? This is showing the way it is, maybe that's what you want.
Yes, that's it, right here, okay.
Which one is that?
Yeah, would you make a copy of that? Thank you so much.
She just said, "Okay."
But this, yes, and this is the time to address those little issues, too, where you have to go around, it cuts it off half of it and all of that.
So, but, and the, with that road that goes down through the industrial building down out there?
Do you want me to already go get a precinct map from state? Current one, or you got it?
I think, I think that one, it was a little, thank you, though, yeah.
Nine forty-six.
Yeah.
Nine forty-one's the one that the city has, we have, and you have to tell them, though.
That's, that's...
Oh, there's your seat, look, look down here, this nine forty-six.
Michael Morrison Road is where the only person you have, they live at the very end of the road.
All the, all the, left, all the, all the left ends, uh...
Yeah, they do, Dan. Like that.
Basically, everybody on that road looks at precinct three, except for the man who does the D.
Part of it, but we're gonna have to do something with that private road.
Was it nine seventeen? That's where all the people live on, they don't live on...
That's at the end of the, the entrance road.
They, I know, they don't live in, they live in, they live in precinct four. They live in precinct four, they vote precinct four, but they're on that private road.
It's all right.
And, uh, so if we do something with that road, we're gonna have to change those voters down there.
I'll take the one off.
You want one?
I thought we were gonna go get it back here, too. I'm not gonna take that one.
I'm not gonna take that one. No, 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 no. Hey, walk over here. Why don't y'all walk over here, and let's look at this one on the wall. All right, do we, do you have, oh, here is gonna be a change, is that right? Is it gonna be eighty-four? Okay, where's the...
It'll be the end of four eighty-nine.
Oh, you told me that, four eighty-nine.
Right here.
Turn into precinct three.
Okay, it affects you two, and you're agreeable with that?
Right.
We'll draw that.
He'd get there.
I would be getting there.
And we're gonna divide that on Reunion Street, it goes all the way through. North of Reunion is still mine, and south of it is, uh, lower.
Okay.
And that puts the reason in, in one. I'm gonna get everything all the way to town, over to the interstate, and I'm gonna pick it up out here, except for where, some of the... This little area right in here with the cloud and the lawyers, I, wherever y'all want to do. You know, it's crazy, the city on this eight forty, the city starts out...
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And, oh, it's to the new level.
I don't think he can take it, because I think he's got too many people up there.
We don't need to take it anyhow, why not have more than...
Well, I'll have to give that, I'll have to give that up, those people that, if I give up, I only have a short part of that road.
Yeah, so...
I mean, but the voters are in our precinct, on that, channel, that private road, like nine seventeen or whatever it is.
So if we go to you then, is that right?
Or the brown road's nine seventeen.
Go to you, is that right?
Oh. I'm sorry.
Those voters will go to you. You gonna take that road all the way to the end?
If that's what y'all want me to do.
Man, that's, it's, the mic doesn't go any further than just, I mean, all the way down.
But I don't know if I'm digging. I got the votes.
See, I don't know, I mean, I don't know.
Well, we may...
Still figure that out.
We'll have to get him to kind of familiar it and then look at it again, 'cause it's gonna be a little touchy stuff up in there, probably. Yeah, okay, now, what, what else?
I don't wanna go across forty-five on any, because I'm already, I'm already gaining miles. I've already got more road miles than any other precinct, and this is gonna put me with more if I don't have, uh, this. Still picking up miles. I don't know about the voters, but I don't wanna speed my road miles.
So, this part right here. Will you take that?
You would.
You what, which part?
Probably that six oh one.
No, that's, buddy.
That's not mine, that's Greg's.
You know what?
That's lower.
Said we voted on it, three one. I know you can't...
Will you take that?
Not today.
Not today, uh-uh. I mean, take, no, 'cause this don't...
There were voters, they all, you said you were giving...
No, because, because this don't give me a whole bunch more people on this road, a whole bunch more votes.
I know, you can't, yeah, and we can, if you can't take that, you're gonna have, we're gonna have to adjust up here, too, to take some people out of yours.
I, I get that up there, I mean, I can't take that, because, I mean, there's a whole lot of people living down through there. And that'd be sending me across, uh, across eighty-four on the east of the south side.
But everything else has been moved and worked.
What are we gonna do about ten eighty and ten nine and ten nine? Down in that swamp.
I got it.
You gonna have ten eighty to the...
To the creek.
To the, to the...
To the swamp.
Down the, two eighty-eight, we're gonna slap that.
Yeah, I'll take the left. Yeah. Yeah, we're already there. That's the only road that's dividing three different sides, which is stupid.
Yeah. But we go to the creek, go to the creek, any creek, please. I mean, I think that's what that creek makes it, we're gonna have to do.
I know, you know, same thing for the other one.
Sure.
Didn't work out too well.
So, okay. Y'all are all in agreement with, I'm not talking about you. Y'all are all...
Lloyd and I are in agreement.
It'll be, it'll be three. You take six oh one, is that what you're taking?
I'm gonna look at it.
Okay.
I'm gonna look at it.
Okay, eh, all right, I'm gonna get into, let's draw it on the map, and we'll get at least that part done and see where we are on, um...
The count, any more areas to be in, right?
Yes, on the count and everything, yeah.
Well, what about this little spot on T right here?
It's gonna move up to eighty-four.
Okay, I think it'd be better if those people vote, and then vote by church, right?
Yes, it's gonna move up to eighty-four.
But all these are gonna be...
It's what the discussion is, eighty-four will be the line, so everything south of eighty-four will be in two, right? Okay.
And then send the, send the, send the, see, not only south of eighty-four, 'cause he goes all the way across there. No, I'm just kidding.
South of eighty-four, just enter.
I am more confused than not.
No, you're not, we leave this.
Okay, we're gonna draw that out. And send it to a city on a number four. Okay, well, you draw it, Judge, you pass it around to somebody, say, please. Uh, we can do another one, if you want, we need to, um...
We'll just take effect, Judge, if we do it.
You know...
That's what the bill character, it's a little bit of a weird.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do it pretty quick. I'm gonna get it to him, and we'll have a special meeting, we can have a little special meeting, but, um...
How do the folks that are gonna vote this November election gonna know?
Well, that's my next question.
You gonna change, I lost that.
I thought we had extra time, because the census come in eight months later.
We do, we should've already had it done under normal circumstances before October.
Right. But if we had extra time, or it didn't affect the people voting this November, and then the, the change didn't affect voters until March, and primaries would be a lot better.
Yeah. Well, if we can vote on it and get this set, then we can ask him, I'll ask him, how would we do it? Vote on it, this is what it's gonna be, it'll take effect on whatever date that we get it to take effect on. So, we'll get our picture drawn, send it to him, I'm sure we'll have to ask him for the changes.
And he'll figure out the population, give it that up.
Yes, and then he'll get that back to us. Perfect, okay. All right, moving right along. So before you leave, if you'll tell that one, we're drawing off the cemetery and, and, well, a special reading for the redistricting and for, um, our voting spot. And right now, the question is, how is this gonna affect our November election? The effective date. All right, number thirteen. Okay, I had a sheet, I guess I always have that sheet. Do you have one that has...
I have one you gave last time.
Okay, no, the one that has the salary grades on it? Beth, I have one that have the, right, figured out what the, uh, per hour rate was for. What is that, still right there, yes, you're right, oh, would you mind us, just bring us some votes? Yes, and I figured all those hits, and I couldn't, to do a sheet on this one. And then we'll look at our, uh, part-time. The, um, the superintendent from Oakwood School, if you'd have any, we'll call them back. I'm assuming it's about, um, the place that you talked about.
About the one hundred five on the road for their stadium field.
So if you're on, I will call, you know, after.
Here's several things that were gathered that you need to remember.
Will you make a copy of this that has the numbers on it?
I'll leave it tomorrow.
It's math.
What?
We make a copy of this, and have the numbers. Get your little exercise, you go back.
Someone's gonna be racing. Okay, so they have the ones that are about the route, right?
I could just tell them, go ahead and do it.
No, it's fine, I can...
Run on over there. I'll do it, yeah. Okay, that's the one we talked about, category three, three, one?
Yes, you wanna go ahead and do that?
We need it.
Three, eight, one. Three, three, one is, uh, Oakwood.
Do that, I'm, okay, I'm back to this, school deal.
Yes, that...
Three, three, one, okay, that's, that's one really tall. Leonard, if you'd like to stay, you're certainly welcome to, but if you want to go and not have to listen to all this, you can sure to go. We'd be glad to keep you if you want to.
Well, you part of all this, now you stay.
There you go. All right, I'm, I'm jotting down on the side there what the per hour amount is that the, um, that are, that's on our salary grades. Curling, you pay up to twelve dollars an hour on part-time, but road and bridge is fifty, up to fifteen dollars an hour. The one on the left side is based on the higher rate amounts, the one on the right side's based on the caps, so you can just, I'll be just recording that.
We got one in there at nineteen, too.
That's a grant.
Okay.
That's a grant, uh, the DA's office.
Okay.
Okay.
There's probably some times for everything, of course, but, um, if we're a full-time employee, we get all of the benefits, which is not included in that per hour calculation. Health, health insurance. Of course, even part-time, you have retirement, and that's their retirement, um, for part-time, did you know that, Lloyd? Part-time?
I did not.
Yeah. So, what we're paying is a little more than part, they get those benefits in addition to the part-time benefits. If you turn around, let's see who some of the other people here are. Take a pan of them. There you go.
What, what do you want to do, good, or what do we need to do?
Well, when we were just, during budget time, everybody was talking about part-time pay. So, here we are, trying to figure that out.
The only change we made on part-time was over our, uh, waste of smoke, correct?
I did it. I did it.
Have people from other offices or the public come in and want that changed, or?
There was this discussion, I said, we'll have, we'll talk about that after, but you know, twelve dollars, well, hiring on a three is, well, twelve, but they do get all of the benefits for hospitalization and all of that, so.
Benefits are worth about four dollars and eighty cents an hour.
We'll be there. Hospitalization, vacation, sick leave. Is there any discussion on it?
Okay, any issues, just, just cost them ten thousand, seven hundred dollars, huh?
And ten thousand, that's roughly four dollars and eighty cents an hour for people that work for you all week. Gets you two weeks' period.
Well, in addition to, we get the sick leave and the-
Eleven.
And the, uh, vacation time. So, is there any discussion on part-time? That's the reason I'm reading over there, somebody said they wanted to talk about it, but if not, we'll go out on our fourteen to approve, have them pay for relocate the tents on the county road three eighty-one.
So, do you agree?
No, we didn't talk about it, I said, we need to draw them out, the show hasn't changed on the appraisal district, but I checked with the title company, the title work. I mean, it's done, that the transaction is closed and it is filed, uh, at the county clerk's office. So, this right here just shows where he has an existing fence. Uh, the road is not maintained from here all the way down below where the picture cuts off, the county quit maintaining it years ago. So, Commissioner's Court years ago allowed him to put a fence across right here. He owns all the property on both sides of the road, so putting a fence up here. Yes, yes. So, putting a fence right here, it, it makes no changes or nobody that would be having any business going down that road, other than him. So, we're not changing anything that's already done, we're just extending it on up, because this is north of where he already owns.
Okay, now, walk that down here, is there anybody that's on that road down there?
It's, it's impassable, in other words, you can't come in from eighteen forty-eight, you can't, you can't get to this.
It's just not a right road.
Yes, exactly.
All right. I don't, I don't agree with you saying that, I was clear.
Yeah, it's definitely impassable. I'll make a motion without him, move his fence north to his new property.
Your motion is set.
Do we need to abandon any county road? I mean, do we need to push, formally push that up where our road stops at that fence line, or?
It wasn't a prescribed road.
Okay.
So, therefore, the ownership of the road chose to come to the middle of the road anyway.
Gotcha.
So-
Okay, I just want-
It shouldn't, it shouldn't be, it's either kept by us or not kept by us, but it never's owned by us.
Is it on the map?
That's what I was gonna say, is it on the map?
Yes, it is, it's, it's been left on there, with Commissioner's Court years ago made that other change, too.
So-
What he's saying is, the motion might be to abandon that road, since there's no one that is gonna be affected by it, no one lives on either side of the, and he owns on both sides, he owns to the middle of the road. It's still his county road, so we're abandoning, so is the most-
Potentially, but it's sold later on.
Can't amend it, oh, road.
From, from his gate.
Yes.
From his gate.
From his gate south to where-
It's been abandoned.
So, once he looks up the gate there-
Yeah, that, that was back, I think Stanley was, it's been a long time ago.
It's been a long time.
Once he looks up the gate there, you won't do any, there won't be any, you won't maintain that?
We don't maintain it down.
So, to abandon, abandon county road three eighty-one,
And-
The first property owner north of where that gate would be would be Thomas Corbin, so we could say abandon the road from the southernmost part of Thomas Corbin property on three eighty-one, south to where it's already been-
And we may not need to, I just wanna bring it up for any future sales that may happen, they may see on the map and say, hey, this county road goes another, however long it goes past, we want the county to come in and maintain this. Uh, it could run into- You could run into problems in the future, I guess. Right now, everything's fine.
Cause they show it on the map, is it on the map in the book?
He said yes.
I would say we need to take that off of that map, because we got into that situation before.
We do need to take it off.
Well, well, this, putting it this way will be of record, public record, because it is in the, uh, file in the county clerk's records, hopefully.
When somebody comes and looks at it, and, and something, they'll, it'll show that there was a county road, and then they'll wanna come in there and want to, want to open that road back up again. I mean, possibility, they'll wanna open that road back, that's what we got into.
But we can't abandon it today, right?
Yeah, I mean, we can.
We can, and I can do a resolution to abandon it and we follow it in a, uh, minute.
Yeah, yeah, and I think-
So, it's public records.
And then we're, and then we are formally done from that spot on, right, forever, as that being a county road. I think that's probably what, I'm not speaking for you, Lloyd, that, that's probably what you, what you would want, right?
Give me that map, if I can read that parcel number, and we can say, south of, uh-
Where is, where is three, um, eighty-one begin?
On the southern point, begins off of eighteen forty-eight, FM eighteen forty-eight.
Ends up in non-forward driveway.
And it goes all the way through to FM four eighty-nine.
Uh, this is, this is at?
This would be, uh, Thomas Corbin's property, right here. On the north side of this new fence.
Is this a, this is on a road?
No. This is, uh, it's all private.
Okay.
What's that church right there, Lloyd?
So, this is three eighty-one coming down here?
Yes, three eighty-one keeps on going, goes all the way to, goes up, then you got three eighty comes across. This goes to four eighty-nine.
You could, we could measure it and say from this road-
From the intersection of three eighty and three eighty-one.
Yes.
X amount of-
X amount of feet.
Okay.
Cause the parcel numbers may change, too.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll get that. All right, and then we'll do the resolution and approve the resolution.
Okay.
So, we can, we can, we can, um, it just says relocate the fence. All right, on the, on the, um, special agenda, we'll have a resolution. And we'll approve the resolution at that point, and we'll have the footage on that.
Yes.
I think we have a resolution from one we've had done recently, I mean, I think we can find that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, what is the motion exactly?
None.
Okay, okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna do that, um, at our next meeting, thank you. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, all right. I have number fifteen, salary contribution agreement between Texas A&amp;M, Agrolife Extension Services, and Freestone County. Um, we have a new agreement with them, and we, uh, just need to approve it, and it is reflecting the twenty-five hundred dollar increase for her, um, to increase the salary contribution agreement from what it previously had been.
Want me to get a motion?
Say.
Okay, right. Motion carried. And it is an increase of twenty-five hundred dollars. I have number sixteen, need to redo our resolution, uh, we haven't sent it in, so this, um, the one authorizing the nomination of individuals for board of director members of the Freestone Central Appraisal District. We had voted on this before, but we did find out that one of the persons was not eligible because they work for the county. So, we'll just do a whole new resolution.
Well, I'd like to see it, and he's still interested in doing it, I'm gonna-
I do, too.
I don't see it on, I don't see the name on it.
All right. How many are we going to get?
There's only one, there's only one position that's up, correct? Teresa.
That's Teresa, unless everybody else, somebody else gets on, and I guess they had to say they are. Is Sid still on it?
Yes.
Well, it's gotta be voting on your vote, I mean, cause the, the schools vote, the cities vote, they, all their votes get off.
We have enough of half a person on.
Actually, I think now we have enough to put a person on.
Oh, sure.
And have some left.
Really?
Can you find the rest of the stuff for the appraisal district?
If we don't, school, we could put, the school could put one and a half, and the county could put a half, we all, we want together.
Well, that's the way it always kinda worked before, but I think, I don't know. I don't know, maybe it's changed a little with the, um, something.
Are we putting somebody on to take Teresa's place, or are we putting somebody on to take Sid's place?
I thought it was just to take Teresa's place. And I guess that's the question, so when we vote, are we voting on everybody that's on the list, or are we just voting on the one that's wanting off? Not just us, but when districts vote.
Do they stagger it? I thought it was the whole list at the same time. Is the way we, we nominate for is a whole slate of officers.
And we can nominate one for us, like, we get-
We can nominate two, we can nominate three, I think.
We could nominate two, sure. And I think, just like that, that some of the school will have their person, and then they'll probably give us enough to get our, our second round.
I'll be part of that, yeah.
Our chief honor, she requested to stay on. And that TIG ISD was gonna put her votes, their votes for term.
What about Warren, class? You know?
Sir.
What about Warren?
I, I'm, I can't speak really far, but I, I think that they nominated, uh, Jerry Don Sanders, and I'm not sure who else.
See, that'd be a good thing to know.
I don't want to take any action on this without knowing for sure.
Well-
Is your headland?
I think it's the fifteenth. I thought, now, I don't see it written here, but that, I, I think we'd vote on all of them at the same time.
I do, too.
The whole, should be, all right, this is from, yeah, here it is. When the, no, that's just the results. The five nominees receiving the most votes are elected to the board of directors, so I believe it's all at the same time, the whole group at the same time. And that's the one from, uh, twenty nineteen for the twenty twenty. I don't think anything's changed. Dan, do you know, you should know everything, just on the moment, like that.
Know if something's changed, or?
Yes. Don't they vote on all of them at the same time, as was on before?
And right now, you're just nominating, you know, the more people are out there, the more you have to choose from.
Yes.
You know, voting will be a, obviously, another
They'll send something, another-
But you'll have all the names on there, and you can decide who you wanna try to-
All right, October the fifteenth, we have to submit our nominations by resolution, the fifteenth, and see before, we, we, we put Sid on, and he had the most votes, and the, the school probably put some on, on his, too. So, it's not just one person's position that we're looking at. So, if-
We just, we, we could, I mean, I, we could do, do Sid and Jerry Don.
Just, just to be sure.
Cause I'm, I'm ninety percent sure that Warren's gonna put him on there.
Okay.
What are we gonna do? Is that what we're gonna do, you wanna do that, put both of them there?
As long as we know that's the way it's going.
Well, this is just nominations, then we can look, they'll give us the list of who's on there, and then we can decide whether we're gonna do our-
I will go and do our vote.
Yes. So, if we put both of them on there, if that's what you want to do, then we'll at least know they're on there.
I make a motion, we put both of them on there.
And we'll be thinking about how we're gonna wait, they'll send a, they'll send a list back of all the people that were nominated. And then we'll decide how to spread the vote there.
Are you good with this motion, ma'am?
I just wanna make sure Sid's on it, if I can.
That was part of his motion?
I'm sorry?
That was part of his motion? I thought you were still figuring out something over there.
No, no.
His motion was Sid and Jerry Don.
Okay.
I'll second it then.
On that, uh, in the vote? Motion carried. Okay, now. What? Make the motion, and Lloyd's second. I have number seventeen, is the resolution agreement for home-delivered grant meal programs. And we need to refund- And we use the funds every year from this grant program to assist with our... They, they'll tell us at this time how much they are, but our resolution is to, um, participate in this, and then we will use the funds for that purpose.
So, the resolution is to keep the agreement that we currently have?
Well, it's a different agreement, but it's...
Could accept a new?
Yes, a resolution authorizing the county grant program year twenty, twenty twenty. We're asking them to add this grant to us, and if you have an eligible program and you comply with, uh, the accounting system, fiscal, I need to create a natural mandate and we will standard it accordingly. We just like it sixteen, nineteen thousand dollars every year, every year. That we don't have much to cancel. That will...
A little better.
We have less than a second on, over eye?
Aye.
Motion carried, and Commissioner, Commissioner's Board members.
While we've been in here handling business, uh, Mansfield had an active shooter at their high school, so we probably need to keep them in prayer. Mansfield had an active shooter at their high school, at Timber, at Timberview High. We still handling that right now with multiple victims, so... Probably need to pray for those folks over there in that area.
Judge, you have to, you have to... Judge, did you go back and do Kristina's bond?
Oh, oh, did I, just Kristina's bond? Yes. It's passed right on. All right, we're going to cut here, we'll go back to... Number eight, bonds and education, we got one. It's a ladder. JB one county, JB one, what? Extension of here, five thousand dollars on, we have a motion.
I'm making a motion.
Sir.
On fair, eye? No, this, it wasn't riders, it's just an actual lawn. Is that a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
The second, on fair, eye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to a...
Aye.